Good evening, everyone. It is January eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and it is seven oh two P M. And my name is Mitch Cohen, and I will happily call this meeting of the Northborough Select Board to order. Um, I'll read some opening remarks. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature a public comment. Uh, we'll now go around the virtual room and confirm that everyone can hear and be heard in order on my screen. Kristen Wickstead.
Here.
Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Lisa Misselli.
Here.
Laura Zait.
Here.
Town Administrator Tim McInerney.
Here.
And Assistant Town Administrator, no longer with an interim in her title, Diane Wackel.
Thank you. Here.
Excellent. Um, all right. So, um, as I mentioned in the introduction, sometimes we change agenda order. So, um, after public comment, which we'll do in just a second, we're going to take the state emergency shelter updates item. Uh, and then we'll go back with the, uh, regular resumption of the order as it is on the agenda. So with that, is there any public comment from our audience for something particularly anything that is not on our agenda? Seeing nothing going once. Going twice. All right. Public comment is concluded. I see Isabella Caruso in the waiting room. Do you want me to bring her in, Tim?
Yes, if you can. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, Isabella.
Hi, thank you for do- um, inviting me.
Of course. Thank you for joining us. So, um, I'll allow you to introduce yourself and your, uh, new position.
Great. My name's Isabella Caruso. I am the interim health director.
Excellent. And you've, uh, joined us to give us an update on some things going on with the emergency shelter at the motel in town. I think we're all familiar with the history since middle of July with that, but, uh, some things are happening. So tell us what's going on, please.
Absolutely. Tim, did you want to start or do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just tell the board, you know, since Tuesday last week, there's been a number of things that have transpired in Isabella and Kristen's transition out. Uh, I just, you know, need to say how impressed I am with the staff of how they handled this. You know, we became advocates for the right thing for the, for these folks down there, and I appreciate the board's understanding. Everything has been in flux. People are moving, not moving. Um, there's been a lot of pieces, and we just want people to feel supported, and we want people to be informed. And that's why I thought it was the best idea to have Isabella come in, because there's been even updates as of today that aren't set in stone. It's still in a fluid state. But I guess the main point introducing her to, uh, the meeting is just to let the community know and try to let the board know the level of care and professionalism for something that we don't have, we have dotted line responsibility for at best. And we've just played a key role to, to be good advocates doing the right thing. So I appreciate the board's patience and in with all the emails that I think we sent out last week, uh, and all the work that staff's done. So I just wanted to start there, let Isabella tell you more about that situation and what we've done to, uh, protect people.
Great. Thank you so much, Tim. And I just want to echo that. We really appreciate the generosity and support of the Northborough community. We definitely couldn't do it without you all. Um, so as you know, we currently have twenty-nine families, so that's a hundred and one individuals that we currently have in our emergency shelter in Northborough. The families are doing absolutely great, um, and they love the snow today. Um, so as of last week, so we were notified on January second, um, that's last Tuesday, that our families were going to be moving to a new hotel in Auburn. Um, so that original move date was January eighth, which is actually today. Um, so after a meeting on January second with town officials and local legislators, we were actually able to move that, um, move that move date, uh, ten days to Thursday, January eighteenth, which is where it stands today. Um, so we're currently working with schools and different providers to, um, the school to secure transportation for students who choose to continue to attend Northborough-Southborough schools. So a lot has been going on to ensure this transition is as smooth as possible. Um, so the Auburn site is going to be staffed by a shelter service provider, so that's kind of what we've been pretending to be for months. Um, so this is part of the state's consolidation plan, and it will offer twenty-four-seven service to families. So as I said, our team is going to work, um, to make sure this transition as is as seamless and, you know, not traumatic as possible. That being said, uh, the organization Central Mass Housing Alliance, C M H A, has been a huge partner in this, um, the shelter work. So they actually are able to pay for a full-time, uh, staff member, a community coordinator, as well as a translator, um, and like bus and other, uh, equipment like that. So they are really working with our families to ensure home housing and, um, employment status. So I just wanted to share a few data points. I'm an EPI, so I love data, um, just to kind of show the success of our, our work, C M H A's work and just the community. Um, so thirty-eight out of the fifty-seven adults have obtained full-time employment, so that's about sixty-seven percent of those families. So twenty-four out of the twenty-nine families have at least one family member working full-time, and then fifteen out of the twenty-nine families have two adults in the household working. Uh, so this is just phenomenal. No other site is like this, to my knowledge. And we really want to thank the town, um, our staff, and then the local chamber for assisting with these jobs for our, our families. Additionally, twenty-two families out of the twenty-nine have connected with at least one property owner and are ready to apply to the Homebase program, and that is done through C M H A. So we're really getting these families on their feet, ready to get out of the shelter system. Um, that being said, C M H A is proposing to the state, um, that they would like to maintain the coordination of housing and services for the majority of these families that are already working and finding apartments. This is ultimately going to be the state's decision, but that is the proposal that was sent, um, about five o'clock tonight. So I can definitely, Tim will update you as we, um, find out more information, but that is where we are right now. The state, we're moving, um, the families are moving out the eighteenth, but C M H A has just put in this additional proposal to hopefully maximize the employment and housing opportunities of these families. Tim, is there anything you would like to add? I know that was a quick rundown.
I, I know before Kristen left, and maybe we had a joint meeting about it, but there were a number of families that were very close, and you covered this, but getting permanent housing, um, can you talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, of course. So basically, the Homebase program is a program through the state where they can provide up to thirty thousand dollars over a two-year program. So right now, um, twenty-two of the twenty-two families have already identified an apartment, so that's the first step. Um, after that, they just need to fill out the Homebase program, and of course, there's a lot of paperwork, but they are already so far down the line, and they're ready to. I think today I heard dates as of like February fifteenth that they could be ready to move. Um, so again, that's with C M H A's help and a lot of applications, but they're ready.
I just think it's tough to have people move twice, right? If we're so close, and to disrupt them just didn't make a lot of sense. So I think it's good work on everybody's part. So thank you.
About to ask for questions from the board, and Lisa, I think I saw your hand up.
All right. Because of this, does that mean that the twenty-two families will stay in Northborough until February fifteenth?
Yes. So C M H A will cover the costs of, um, what they've been doing. So bus, and they will continue to support the families through their staff. And then ideally, the proposal laid out that the state would pay for the housing and hopefully the food.
And the other, what, the other, um, seven are going?
Yeah, there's seven families, just need a lot more, um, assistance and coordination, and actually would really benefit from twenty-four-seven services. So we would recommend, C M H A recommends that they do go to Auburn and are provided by MOC services.
And do we know where their apartments are? What towns?
I've heard anywhere from Northborough to South Grafton, um, definitely within the Worcester community, but they're trying to look for local, uh, areas because they really like the school system.
And last question then is if in case they went to Grafton or outside of North or Southborough, then they would also get a busing situation where they would come back to school here?
So once they get into this Homebase program and they sign a lease, they would have to go. They would no longer be considered homeless and would need to go to that school system.
Okay.
But the ones, the ones going to Auburn would still be considered homeless, and they would have the right to continue in the Northborough schools, correct?
Correct. Yeah. Yes, to my understanding.
Wow.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you so much for that update. I was trying to capture all the stats that you were sharing so quickly. Would it be possible just to get a copy of that? Because I know these questions do come out in the community, especially with a lot of the volunteers that have been a part of that. If there's anything that I can share with them, I would love it, because I think you mentioned that the community had a, everybody had a vested interest in, in this positive update. So thank you for all that you and the team have done.
Absolutely. I can share out those stats, um, tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen?
Thanks, Isabella. I didn't realize you were Isabella Caruso. Like, I get emails from you, and then I've met you in person when I've been volunteering at the shelter. I didn't realize you were this in person.
Nice to meet you again.
Anyway, um, so, um, okay. So the, the families that are definitely going to Auburn, they're, they're definitely going on the eighteenth, is that's, uh, pretty much?
As of right now, all of the families are going to Auburn on the eighteenth. Um, and yes, that's, that's the, the final date that we have received.
But you're hopeful that the state will be reasonable about making these other people not have to move twice, right?
I hope so.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Um, so, so if it's, um, in Auburn, are there different rules about, um, living there? Or do they have, um, more strict sort of rules to follow at this shelter in Auburn?
Yes. So technically, this is, you know, the health department is running the shelter. If, when they go to Auburn, it's an emergency, uh, E A shelter site. So, uh, again, I'm not super knowledgeable about the shelter system, but it is an official shelter, so they'll be entered into the system, meaning there's curfews, no guests, things like that. So it, it's an official twenty-four-seven shelter.
Okay. Um, all right, and so, um, and the people who are, we're hoping can stay because they're moving along so nicely with their finding housing. That's such wonderful news. Um, are they, um, is the, are, are they all roughly the fifteenth, or do they vary a little bit? The, the, the date when they might move out?
I think it, it totally varies, and it depends on the timeline of applications. Um,
Yeah. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
So, Isabella, we talked about a May and a July date for this contract. So maybe if you clarify that, because we wouldn't provide services indefinitely. We want to, there'll be a timing associated with the application to the state.
Yes. Um, so in C M H A's proposal, they said a end date of May twenty-twenty-four, and at that point, they would, any families who hadn't been accepted or found an apartment in the Homebase program, they would actually try their best efforts, I think that's how it was worded, to bring those families into their shelter. Um, so C M H A actually does have, um, a, a full-time shelter. So they would kind of take those families on if worst case they could not find an apartment.
I actually have one more question. Um, so what about that playroom? Is that, how, do you have plans for that? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so we, we talked to MOC, Making Opportunities Count. They are the service provider in Auburn. They are willing and will work on creating a playroom, and we are looking to, if all of our families move, to donate most of the, the playroom to their site, so they can continue that.
Could you, Isabella, could you speak to, to that playroom? Because that was, um, that was a really creative and really nice thing that everyone put together.
Absolutely. I will not take, uh, credit for Kristen's idea. It is a, if you haven't seen pictures, it is, we took over one of the larger rooms. It looks like you walked into a kindergarten room. Um, it's lovely. It's led by Kathy DeGleche, and it's open most mornings. The kids love it. We have twenty-nine kids under the age of five, so they're not leaving that motel site. Um, they love it. They see her, they run to the playroom, and it's just a great opportunity for, for our kids and, and really to get them ready for school, because they're not having those opportunities elsewhere. And I know a lot of you have volunteered, and it's just awesome. So thank you so much.
It's a, it's a great way to get to play with little kids if you're a good person, like maybe some of us are. And also, sometimes they sit in your lap and snuggle you, and that's really nice. So you have to get Cory checked, obviously, but it's such a great, I love, I love going.
Laura, did you have another question?
It was just, and I don't know if I heard this correctly, Isabella, so I apologize. Did you say that there are a handful of families that have already been approved by Homebase that are, that were hoping to not move twice?
Right. So they haven't submitted the Homebase application, but they're in the process of doing that with C M H A. Um, so our goal is to hopefully keep those families that are so far along, um, not send them to Auburn ideally, and continue that process, and they can just go out into the community.
Okay. If there's any, it's just, I'm sure you're aware of this, but when we've had, um, the governor and the lieutenant governor come to town, they've commented on the success of the Northborough program. And if that will help you in making sure that we can help those families with less disruption, I know that the state has really offered to do what they can to help us, because even they recognize how great the work is that was done in Northborough.
I appreciate it, and we're, we're trying every angle we can. So if you know anyone, that would be great, but.
Please keep it, I mean, honestly, if we can, if there's anything that we can do to help from a state perspective, even a letter, I, I don't know if other board members have a better suggestion about this. We've all heard the message.
Like a letter from the Select Board, if that would help to whoever.
Would that be helpful to include with your request?
We, we can ask, um, if they, if they want a letter submitted. The advocacy we had with the state delegation that they had the call for this was incredible. So they're very much aware. Um, the chair was on the call as well, and the advocacy was, they got the message that, that they need to do the right thing, but we can certainly ask what they need for their application.
Yeah, our, both of our state reps and our state senator were on that call and, uh, spoke very, very eloquently in support of what was best for the families, which is, don't move them too, too quickly. Um, the state's origin, original proposal of moving them on the eighth, which was just, I think, three or four days after they would have been officially notified, um, would have been really disruptive. Um, and, uh, so they, they spoke first on that, and then town officials backed that up. Uh, and I, I, I'm very glad the state made that decision, and it sounds like we're asking them to, to be even a little bit more flexible, and hopefully they will be, because clearly these things are the best, you know, for the, for these families. It's, you know, it's interesting. This is a, it's a little bittersweet, because many of us were there. Uh, sometimes, I mean, I know I was there, Isabella. I think you were there literally when they were getting out of the cars, arriving at this motel for the very first time. And, um, you know, had only been in the country a couple of days, had no idea what was going on. They just wanted a better life. And, um, and now, just a few months later, things are, the wheels are, are in motion, have been in motion for quite a while, and, and things are really settling down. Um, it'll be sad to, to not see them again on a regular basis, but it'll, it's a really nice feeling that, that we as a town played a, a really important role in getting them settled and, and getting them moving all in the right direction. So, um, I can't thank Isabella, you, you and your staff and your predecessor enough for, for making this happen. Laura?
Another question, I'm sorry. So is there still a shelter crisis? And will this shelter continue in Northborough with new families after these ones move, or is the program totally shifting now?
That is a good question. Uh, we have not heard of any information that they would send new families. Their plan right now is to consolidate shelters, so just combine different shelters into one location, um, to maximize programs going only to one site. So I obviously don't know what's going to happen, but I would assume if they're consolidating that, uh, it's likely not to happen, at least in the near future.
Thank you.
My understanding is due to the, the state budget situation of the line items that fund these programs is that there's not a lot more, um, use, additional families being placed into the shelter system. But it's conceivable that as families move out of the shelter system into permanent housing, maybe funds wet up, but I agree with what Isabella said. I think everybody realizes, um, including the state, that these families are much better served by shelter sites that have twenty-four-seven staff, which generally only happens, I think, at fifty families, I think, is the threshold for when you get twenty-four-seven staffing of sites. And then it becomes a much more organized situation and can draw in the help that, um, that the families that we've had in Northborough for the last several months really didn't get at all at the beginning. Lisa?
Um, just a question about, um, funding. So what happens to the hours and such that are, that Northborough has put into the, to the families and all the work in addition to what we normally do in the daytime? Do we get the state, does the state reimburse for, for that, um, manpower? Or is it just something that the town has donated?
My understanding is the state has not paid for the, for the manpower of our full-time employees when they are working on the site. Um, the state has provided funding for additional staffing and additional resources. They didn't at the beginning. It was, you know, it was an emergency crisis within the town of Northborough and our health department. That's, that's their job, and it's our job to deal with those emergencies. So that's how, it's essentially how that was funded.
So, but at this point, is it like, uh, uh, you know, level balance? Or is there still like time and everything else that we've still put in in addition to that? Since it's already past the emergency, or is it not past the emergency until they go into their new homes?
So it, it's not, it wouldn't be passed until it's over. The, the staffing level, Isabella, you must know it better than anyone. If there's any opportunity for reimbursement, we'll get it. Um, or at least apply for it. But the staff that's our staff will still be our staff. They just won't be dedicated to that.
I would say, so our full-time coalition coordinator and our part-time translator, who are paid or reimbursed by C M H A, they're doing most of the work right now in conjunction with the three to four National Guards that are there every day. Um, so I definitely think in the beginning, the health department was definitely there every day, making sure everything was moving smoothly. And we have slowly but surely kind of stepped away and just deal with the, the high-level stuff and in dealing with these types of situations.
And Kathy Daglish, who's there on a very regular basis, is a volunteer now. She's, she's retired, and this is what she chooses to do with her time. It makes her really happy, I think.
Any other questions from the board? Anything else to, to share about this, Isabella or Tim? This topic?
No, again, great work, and appreciate the board's understanding and letting us share at least an update for you and for the community.
Yeah, thank you all for your support. I've seen you all there, and it's, it's just been a pleasure to, to have this experience. And the families are, are so, so grateful. We had a conversation. Kristen told them she was leaving, and they were leaving, and it was a very emotional, um, meeting. So they're definitely very appreciative of, of what we've all done, and they want to stay in Northborough. So speaks volumes.
That's great. Please keep us informed.
Absolutely.
And let us know, as always, if there's anything we can do to help.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much, Isabella. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next on our agenda, we have, uh, meeting minutes from December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion or any, uh, any comments?
I didn't get to, I haven't read them yet, so.
Okay. They did, they did come out, um, sometime this afternoon. I have no problem if folks want to defer them to the next meeting.
I would prefer that. I, I haven't had a chance to look at them.
Okay. Yep, that's fine. Um, all right. So we, we will postpone those, uh, to the next meeting. Hopefully, they can get into our regular meeting packet, um, on the, um, twenty-second, our next regular meeting. Uh, moving right along, update on municipal electrical aggregation program. Uh, Tim or Di?
I think Diane and I are going to kind of, uh, tag team on this, if you will. I'll just tell you that, uh, from what I can see, uh, Diane, Diane's doing a great job kind of navigating this plan. Um, I did this exact program six, ten years ago with Grafton. We went out to bid, we hired a consultant, same consultant you have, we have, um, I should apologize. I, I have you on one screen, but I have my camera down here. So if I keep kind of looking at you, I'm trying to make sure I'm attentive, but I can't look directly at you. So I'm looking at this. Anyways, so six, ten years ago, we, uh, did this with the same consultant. We went out to bid, and there's some items that you should just be aware of. There's no, uh, decision to be made by the board tonight. It's just an update. There's no action required by you. But there are a lot of steps, which Diane has a great folder on all this. So we thought we would just update you on a couple of things that need to happen. And when I say a couple, it's more than a couple. So I'm going to go through them quickly. And, uh, if I misstep or misspeak, I am hoping Diane will jump in. So our, our first thing with Paul and Marlena, who were the consultants, uh, we're hoping to have them in for a public presentation to the board on the twenty-second of January, which is your next scheduled meeting, which will open up a thirty-day period for public comment. So that window will open. We will, um, get information out to receive public comment on what energy aggregation will be. The goal after that will be to establish the website, which will be February first to launch that. We will actually have, I know, given you a lot of details that we, we went back and forth with. And I guess in the, in the, within the guidelines of the, uh, of the program and what's required by Department of Public Utilities. So I'll just run through these quickly. So on our website, there'll be a banner that'll be a link to another website. It'll just be for our energy aggregation only. Uh, we will use Facebook News and Announcements, um, the newspaper, email blast, boards and committees to announce the launch, if you will, of the website and of the program overall. Usually, don't hold me to this, but the, the website is very simple. It's W W dot masspowerchoice.com slash Northborough. So if you wanted to take that same domain and put slash Grafton, you can look at what Grafton's website looked like, and ours would look very much like that. But that'd be launched hopefully by February first. There are obviously emails, um, that go to the consultant. So that's why we have a consultant, right? Because there's a lot of technical pieces to, to have people opt out of a program like this that they will handle with the electric utility. So that's the first thing about the website. It provides, you know, some staff buffer. We're forced there, we know the program, but the consultant gets point zero zero one percent per kilowatt hour, or cent per kilowatt hour. And that's what they get paid to do, is to deal with those types of things and obviously maintain the website. The frequently asked questions, they would develop those and have those on the website as well. The website's interesting because it's, uh, it translates into any language, which most websites can do, but it's a very unique bar and icon that people can look at and do that with the program itself. Uh, and I'm assuming that we all know what energy aggregation is, right? So I don't need to really go through that, I don't think, but I can do that. There will be, uh, a green energy choice for an additional cost. So if we go to bid to the open market, uh, the open market will say, we'll, we'll sell you power for fifteen cents a kilowatt, and we'll also sell you green-only energy at seventeen cents a kilowatt. And then we'll decide from there if we wanted to purchase it for the community. Just by way of example, I'll tell you that in Grafton right now, the standard rate for just electricity is ten point eight cents per kilowatt, and the green option or the green choice is eleven point seven oh eight cents per kilowatt hour. eight cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, usually the terms of a contract, they we we would ask them and the consultant will verify this next week. The term is important, right? Usually the longer you go, the less the rate will be. But that's not always true because the market is certainly volatile. But we'll do, we'll ask for a rate at twenty-four, twelve, thirty-six and maybe even to two uh forty-eight months. Uh, the rates change, as you know, for residential and commercial every six months. And industrial, it's every three months. So we could not find a current residential bill for a Northborough resident. So we do have an example. So when we have these outreach meetings and we do have this meeting on the twenty-second, we'll want people to look at their bill to see what they currently pay now. Uh, since we're a municipal, we we've aggregated the load here through Constellation New Energy, so it's like seventeen cents a kilowatt. Um, so we don't have a residential or commercial bill, but I did do a cotton paste. If Diane, if you want to show that bill.
Would you show it, Diane?
As an example, that would be good at this point.
Yep. And here we go. All right, so you should now see this window here. You see that, everybody?
I do.
Okay, great. Again, apology, just like Tim did, I apologize. Screen I'm sharing is to the right, so you're seeing the side of my face.
So, wh- if you look at the front of your bill, it has a lot of things like stranded cost, destination charge, generation, all this. Um, all these small fractions of a penny per kilowatt. But we're we're talking about for energy aggregation is just this power electricity supply. So that's all we'll cover. Uh, and this is from, uh, you know, a website. It's an example. It does say Grafton, but uh, obviously I'm partial because I know I know the pro- the project pretty well. Um, so that's what we're trying to uh, look for consistency and flatness in the rate. The goal isn't always to save money. It's to lose volatility throughout the the summer months when electricity tends to be higher than in the winter months. So we're trying to smooth that rate and in the process, save people money uh, on this portion of their electric bill. So it doesn't necessarily mean that the bill overall, the DPU controls every one of those line items on the front of the bill and they get asked all the time by utilities to increase because they have costs that they need to cover and DPU will vote to increase those costs. They have nothing to do with what we're talking about. This is just the supply side of the bill. And if we can stabilize that, the goal is to save people long-term uh, money on their electric bill overall. So that's what the bill looks like. So if you want to look at your bill, look at that piece. So what'll happen is we'll go out to bid to the open market and we'll get a contractor, uh, electric supply company to give us an 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 aggregate number for the load of electricity generated by the residents in the commercial industry of Northborough or per kilowatt rate. And that'll happen, uh, again, the timing of that depends on two things. DPU has to give us approval. After we do all these things in terms of having like the outreach, the website, the mailing, y- your meeting on the twenty-second, when we do the public presentation, all that stuff has to be checkboxed through before DPU will allow us to go out to bid. And then when we get bids back, if they're not favorable, we just will not sign a contract. It's that simple. It will be the middle of the day. We will go to bid at nine, ten-thirty in the morning and we'll know by noon time and then i- if the board either authorizes the chair to sign or me to sign and we can talk about parameters for signing that contract. Uh, we would have to do that within an hour or two of receiving the notice from the from the supplier. And we would execute and on the next billing cycle, um, people would start to hopefully enjoy a more consistent, lower rate. Uh, we can't guarantee that the rate will go down because obviously, like I said, the utilities get to change commercial and residential rates every six months. But we can certainly look historically to see what the data has been and then project forward based on average consumption per household, because we can get that data from the utility as well. And we can see if there are any savings to be had. So there'll be some analysis that has to be done, which we will do. Um, but the the first piece is to get the consultants in here to do the public presentation to the board. And then uh, we'll go to DPU after we meet all these criteria for notice and for public engagement. And as of right now from DPU, there's no sense of timing. They are on a delay in terms of their approval for these types of requests. We need to time the market as well. So we want to get approval and then we'll again, kind of ride the clutch to see when the best time to go out to bid will be, so we can take advantage of generally the gas market, because that generates a lot of electricity for the state of Massachusetts, but there's a lot of variables that go into that. So we can dive deeper into that on the twenty-second. So Diane, did I miss particular pieces or did I go too fast? And if I did, I apologize, but I just wanted to give a general update.
I thought you did a great job. You covered pretty much, unless anybody has any questions.
The name of the program, we should probably, sorry, uh, the name of the program will be Northborough Power Choice. So it's pretty descriptive. I couldn't say electric power, but you know, we can, we can debate that and discuss that at the meeting on the twenty-second. It's not, nothing has been cast in stone, so we can have that discussion about what that um, program name should be, but that's that's what we think it is as of right now. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, sorry. A cou- a couple of quick things. Could you repeat the rates again that you said Grafton is paying now?
Yeah, Grafton's at ten point eight cents per kilowatt and then the green is eleven point seven oh eight.
So the national grid standard rate, which is what just about everybody in Northborough paying is paying right now is eighteen point two. So, yeah, look, we're looking to do better. Uh, we should be able to do better. The other thing that I'll add, then I'll open it up for questions is, um, I attended um, a webinar uh sometime in December. I forget. It was it was another one of the companies that that um, handles these aggregations. And they said that um, a- as I knew, as we've talked about at prior meetings, that Department of Public Utilities is very, very slow currently in approving town plans. There's obviously a lot of interest in doing that, but um, they only approved one in two thousand twenty-two, one town and and they they approved none in twenty twenty-three. Nobody seems to know why. So once we get to the point where we're submitting it, we will work with our legislatures to add to the pressure that DPU is um, is feeling for them to move this right along and and um, I went to a conference, uh, at the MMA conference in January. Um, I think it was the General Counsel for DPU was um, was one of the presenters and was saying that they were trying to eh to speed it up, that they recognized that they were behind schedule. And I I, nobody could understand and he could not explain why it was taking so long. And Tim, I I don't know if you have anything, yeah, any guesses?
Yeah, I I can't make an excuse for them. We'll we'll have to push them.
Yeah.
Because it's important, because eight cents, if they're really, I mean, Grafton signed multiple contracts for multiple years. So since I left, they've even opted and they were lucky to enjoy the ten cents a kilowatt and save people the eight cents. I I can't, I I, you know, who knows? I mean, you, we all have contacts with the state delegation. We'll just have to push them uh, just like we do on all other matters.
Okay, so questions from the board? Like Lisa, I think I saw your hand up before and Julianne after.
We talked, we've talked about this in the past and they talked about because we waited for a couple of years anyway, more than that. Um, the pricing, you know, changed considerably so that at one point it wouldn't even be a savings and that's what we were told, I think, in the last few years, that it wasn't going to be a savings. That's why we didn't, we didn't move forward on that. So, when it's so close, I mean, if we, if it were, you know, a penny, um, I guess that would be up to the residents to decide if they wanted to do that, but are you saying that they change it every six months, even though you would have a twenty, twenty-four month contract? Uh, the rates would still be flexible and they wouldn't hold it or?
Yeah, let me answer that, because that's important, because if I, maybe I did go too fast. I was, I was trying to tell you and the community that national grids rate right now changes in the spring and fall. So every six months, the rate currently that you have, as the chair mentioned, it's eighteen cents per kilowatt right now in the winter. But six months ago, it was some other number. So when we go out to bid and we get an aggregate price, it's that price, it doesn't change, but whatever term we choose. So if we pick twelve months, twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight or seventy-two, if it's twelve point two, it stays twelve point two for the whole time of that contract. So it does not change at all.
Okay, thank you.
Julianne, did you ever hand up before?
I I did, I did. Just a couple of quick questions. So so when we get to the point of signing up, the a resident is in unless they actually opt out, correct?
Correct.
And that's what notices, all the notices and all the postcard mailings are designed to let people know. You have to opt out if you didn't want to take advantage of this and they can. The the problem comes in. They opt out, I and I don't want to cut you off. I know you have another question, but I want to drill down if I can. Um, you can't, you know, the six-month rate is a penny lower, you opt out or opt in. It was, once you, you're in, you're in. And if you opt out, it's gonna be very difficult to come back into the the Northborough rate. I'm using my experience from seven years ago that that was the case. We will get further clarification on that on uh, the next meeting on the twenty-second. But you can't, you can't bounce in and out because the service provider is looking at an aggregate load based on kilowatts right now. So all those people are in, so that's why they give you the price. If people pull out, they, you know, we're we're not really dealing in good faith at that point. So maybe we wouldn't tell you wanted, but.
Yeah, no, that that's very good. Um, okay, and the other question is the consultant. Is the consultant a private company or is this a state agency?
It's a private company.
Okay.
Paragon is the name, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Paragon Energy and they they're just a consulting firm and under the law, they get to get, I hope I get this right. I think it's three zeros and a penny. So zero, point zero 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 one cent per kilowatt and it's built in. No one pays anymore. That's part of the rate. So the supplier, the person, the group providing the bid knows that they have to pay the consultant point zero 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 one cent for every kilowatt. So if it's ten cents when they give us the bid, that's included in that number.
Wow, okay. And so they will help us decide whether to do it for two years or four years and okay, they'll lay it all out for us. All right, great. Thank you so much.
And then I, Mitch.
Yeah.
Through you, uh, um, you've mentioned that there was one approval in twenty twenty-two? Did, did you say from the DPU?
There was, yeah, so so not of not of Northborough, but of other. Yeah, there, according to, it was, um, let me see if I can remember the organization that.
Because I can follow up with them, with our consultant about that.
Community choice, gee, and oh, Green Energy Consumers was the organization that gave a presentation that I had to attend virtually. Um, and what they said and it seems about accurate from other things that I've heard that of the over twenty towns that have plans sitting on DPU's desk, they've only approved one in the last two years and that was in twenty twenty-two.
Okay. All right, I'll I'll pose that question to our consultant and see what they have to say.
And that's consistent with um, at the MMA conference on the seminar that I attended last January, that's pretty much in line. There were a number of towns represented in that room with with select board members and town administrators in the audience. Um, ready to to throw fruit at the people at the podium who uh, move it right along. Um, so eh eh as to why, why, I have no idea. It's it's a mystery to to me and to a lot of people, but hopefully that will change. Obviously, the sooner that we can get started on our end, the sooner we get in the queue.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Uh, one other thing that I thought was inter- uh, sorry, Julianne, go ahead.
So I was, I was wondering if Tim could comment on, in the seven years, I think you said it's in Grafton. Did you ever find that you were paying more than if you weren't part of the aggregation system?
I I seem to recall one cycle. So every six months, like I said, national grid changed their rates. I think there was a time. But I will tell you that on average, uh, because I did a lot of this comparative analysis relative to taxes and we did overrides and trying to save people money and have some value add from a staff perspective. Um, you know, on average, for the time I was there, we saved people over thirty dollars a month on average for the whole duration. But that was them and that was, you know, energy prices was rock bottom back then, so we took advantage of all those pieces. Uh, and then I did math on aggregation of how much money that actually was and it was in the millions of dollars in terms of a life of the program for the cumulative savings versus the rates on average for national grid. So I I'm not gonna say that, you know, we can offer that here. They don't even, DPU's big thing was don't promise anybody a savings. I mean, we're trying to do this because we're trying to save people money, but they say don't promise them anything, because the utilities could go down oh, you know, lower than what you locked in at and that's, that's the risk. But we know what the history of national grid has been from a billing perspective, so that's why they allow you to do this under the law. So yes, short answer is yes. I think I've seen at least one uh, cycle in the six months where it did go below our rate. But cumulatively, average of thirty, I think it was thirty-two and change. Um, savings per month on average for the single-family house.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's a, actually, that was the same point I was gonna make is that was generally mentioned at this um, this webinar that I attended last month. And they had done, um, they they had analyzed the data and I don't remember the exact number they came up with, but they looked at twenty or thirty towns that this organization works with over the period of their agreements and looked at every, you know, I think every calendar month or every calendar quarter and they found that I I seem to remember it being somewhere in the ninety percent range that ninety percent of those units, the residents of those towns paid less than the default rate from the electricity provider and only ten percent they paid more. And um, and and what happens is is, let's say, September, we go out to bid, we get it, we get a good rate then, but then November, national grid goes out. We've got a six-month contract. They go out for their six-month contract. It ends up coming in a little lower and then so for that four-month overlap, in theory, someone could have paid a little bit more by sticking with national grid, but that is rare. That's about ten percent, if I remember the numbers right, of of the calendar months or quarters. So, yeah, as Tim said, it can happen. It almost never does. And over the long run, uh, this will save people uh, measurable amounts of money. Lisa.
Um, just a thought, if, okay, as we get into this and we we want to carry it on for a couple of years anyway. And we decided to also get like a solar farm to create in, you know, electricity for us, for the towns, municipal buildings or whatever. How does that play in or is that a separate thing that wouldn't be in part of the contract because we didn't include it in all the recipients? Is that how you would do that, Tim?
When you, I I, this is for the the residential industrial, commercial load of the community for electricity. If we yeah, I I mean, you must have solar providers or um, I'm trying to think, we did these before, where we bought. Yeah, I gotta, I gotta go back and I gotta look at that piece because we had, we had solar farms in Grafton where we targeted them and we actually bought a portion of their power for less than, but that was from municipal, like we have Constellation New Energy right now. for less than, but that was from municipal, like we have Constellation New Energy right now provides us with electricity supply, which is lower than National Grid's rate right now. So we, from a municipal use standpoint, we already aggregated that subload. So that's, that's already done. So it won't be part of the the residential aggregated load.
Okay.
Yeah, so there the school department uh already has one solar array on top of Algonquin and um I attended a school committee meeting. I think I mentioned it in my reports last month, that they're they're looking to add several new solar uh panel sections to a number of the buildings and parking lots. So those those create power for that building, so it wouldn't play into this at all and um in all likelihood, as Tim said, his experience in Grafton and it's happens in a number of other towns that sometimes there's a solar farm or a wind farm that provides power to specific buildings and would be separate from this. It would be interesting. It's an interesting question maybe to ask during the public hearing next meeting. Um, what happens if either we as a town or or some other company says we want to provide power from a solar farm to your residents? How does that get factored in? I don't know the answer to that. Good question. Any other questions? Okay, so we look forward to hopefully at our next regular meeting, uh formally kicking this off. Thank you very much, Diane and Tim. Next up, vote to us affirm someone named Jason Little. That name seems very familiar to me. Finance director as town accountant. Tim, give us uh the good news on what this is all about.
Yeah, as you know, we welcomed back Jason to be the finance director last week or the week before. He is set to come back on the fifteenth. And the the board under the charter appoints the town accountant, so it only makes sense to have the finance director and the town accountant. In most communities where you have a finance director, it's either the treasurer collector serves as finance director and treasurer collector or the town accountant serves as finance director. I've worked in a couple of communities where the town accountant has been the finance director. So it's one in the same, but the designation from probably a state filing perspective of uh year-end reports and so forth. Uh, the town accountants are voted by the by the board and we want to notify the state of that fact as well.
So you've underplayed the biggest news of this, which is Jason coming back. That's obviously the board, the board knows this. Um, many of the public may not. Jason uh served as our town accountant and finance director for a number of years. Uh, left, I think, the beginning of November for a job, a similar job in another community and has decided Northborough is is better, so. Um, so that that really, that really is good news.
I will just share quickly that you know, the bu- from a budgetary perspective and getting the budget document created, we are set to create the FY twenty-five budget over the next three to four weeks. Uh, we have them all in hand. I think I'm, actually, I might be missing one. I apologize. I think I'm missing one department. Um, but we are glad to have him back because there's a lot of institutional knowledge. Uh, he's worked well, I think, with the board and staff. And he he just knows his stuff and it can't be understated. You know, we just don't, you don't grow building inspectors on trees, you don't grow town accountants on trees or assessors or treasurer collectors. It's just they're very difficult to find qualified candidates. And you have uh, a very special gift that you should be grateful for. You have a lot of these just in-house, in-hand, and we're able to get Jason to come back, so we're glad to have him.
So he's due to come back, is it on the fifteenth?
That's his start date, yes. But he gives, we 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 got him, we got him working ahead of time.
That's great. Um, you you just for whoever makes the motion, should that motion be effective as of January fifteenth?
Please.
Okay. All right, Lisa, do you have your hand up?
One question. He's coming back as finance director only though, not finance director and? Right? Is it just finance?
No, he's he's coming back in the in the same position that he left. So so on the assumption that this board tonight approves the vote to affirm the appointment of Jason Little to serve as town accountant, which is the requested motion, um then uh, then he would be in the same position under which he left.
Okay, because I thought we were splitting those two jobs up, but we're not.
We've had some conversations about that, that that would need budgetary approval so that um, you know, we'd need to fund those positions separately as two separate positions, which is not part of tonight's discussion, may come up in the near future.
All right, that's, it's a win-win then. We don't, we don't split it up, we don't have two different uh payrolls, so it's just.
Again, we may, we may want to have that conversation in the near future. But that's not part of tonight's discussion, just getting him back in in the building. Any other uh comments or questions from the board?
I'm happy.
Laura?
I'm happy with this news. So thank you for all that you did to make this happen. Tim.
And I won't even suggest that we ask for a refund on the pizza party we threw him.
Wow.
All right, yeah, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I moved the vote board, the board, sorry, let me start again. I moved the board vote to affirm the appointment of Jason Little to serve as town accountant effective January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Laura. I heard Laura first. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, Kristen.
I.
Laura.
Hi.
Julianne.
I.
Lisa.
I.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. Um, congratulations to Jason and all all around. Looking forward to seeing him again. Um, next up, discussion regarding HVAC issues at the senior center.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll start off. Um, I just, so everybody knows that the systems at the senior center are up and running, they're enjoying a seventy degree evening. Uh, staff did a great job communicating throughout this. I tried to keep the board up to date as possible. We are to the community and to the the end users of the senior center, we I sincerely apologize for the inconvenience because it was you know, the worst timing, they had events planned, they had a a lunch planned. And and Kendra was great of coordinating and getting meals out the door for those days that they had uh committed to. So there was a lot of pieces that were moving. Uh, the board should know that there were three mechanical issues ongoing from the start of December. So there was a water heater issue. I'm not, I'm I'm really I I went to a trade high school, but I no longer practice any trades, so I know some things, but don't press me on particulars, I only know a little bit, just to make myself look silly. But the water heater, at the same time, uh, there was a leak in the dry pressurized sprinkler system. So that was causing a pump that kept going off, causing the fire alarm to go off. And and then the heat um stopped working. There was discussions about, do they have a generator? But they do have a generator, the generator works fine, but the heat, for whatever reason, it's a first generation heat pump system, and you might all already know this, but for the community, uh, the water, the groundwater it uses to heat up that building, it has a lot of minerals, it's mineral rich. And there's a screen that gets, or a filter, if you will, that gets clogged from time to time. And there was no way to flush that out during preventative maintenance. Now there is because that was part of the fix. So we think we've solved the problem. But there were a lot of things happening at one time that just kept compiling and coordinating and then the the manufacturer of these particular parts was closed until after the first of the year, so they closed between Christmas Eve and New Year's the second. So they weren't even open, uh, so our service provider couldn't even get the part. So when we finally got it in, it took a while to get that building up and up and running and and heated. So as as much as uh we don't want to see things like that happen, I think we responded as about as appropriately as we could have.
So um, just to back up a little bit, I was just looking at my emails and I think you informed us the board of this on the Monday, the twenty-second of December, that the building would be closed, I think, as of that afternoon or as of the next day due to heating issue. Um, so the building was was closed for, I don't remember exactly, it was about two weeks. Um, which is very, very frustrating. Um, and I I I've learned enough about this that, you know, I'm not casting blame on anybody. Just a very, very frustrating comedy combination of of events and timing and as you said, um, and I think Sean sent us a very good memo on this, which was there's only one place to get this part and this company was closed for those two weeks. Uh, and it just happened to work out that way. Um, uh, but you know, the senior center and the library are our two most retail focused municipal buildings and losing any of them for any period of time. You know, it it prevents our our town from doing some of its most important work. So um, I was very, very frustrated and sad about the situation. Um, again, not to cast blame on anybody. I wish there was something else we could have done, but hopefully there's something we can do to um, you know, to more permanently improve the situation to um have spare parts on hand through our provider and anything like that, anything that we can do. Um, you know, go go in there in a couple of weeks before the this company's winter closure, um, you know, shake the pipes around a little bit and see if anything is about to break. Um, go go ahead and do that, uh, so we don't have this happen again.
Yeah, thank you. We, it the staff knows that that they are retail facing, public spaces are very important, so that's a beautiful building, so you should be proud of it.
Any questions, Julianne?
Well, I think it was last meeting, we we received the building assessment report. Wh- what I'm understanding is that this was totally unpredictable, but but now that we have this report, um, will that help us as we move into the, you know, move forward in preventing some of these um, you know, building closures and things like that? And the second part of that question is, with the building assessment report, are there some things that we should be addressing very soon?
Well, the second part, I I think I can answer, I can answer them both, but that one in terms of a a priority list, I think in your last meeting, you did talk to Scott and to Sean about what their priorities were for for next steps for preventative maintenance. Um, I'll get back with them on that. I don't know what they, I don't know what they are, what they've come up with. And then th- there's no way that that system will predict. It might make recommendations on belts, filters, um, other preventative maintenance. They have a monitoring system, they can watch the heat remotely, they can have alarms for things with the SCADA system, they can go through that and monitor and then respond. But I'm not so sure it'll actually tell us when a failure might occur and then have some preventative maintenance around that isolated issue. But it's a, it's a good question. I can ask Scott and Sean if if there's some piece of that I'm not understanding, but in terms of preventative maintenance is what those systems are designed for us to keep track of and to do on a regular basis.
Right, and I I'm glad we we did that study. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, Tim, thank you very much uh for that update. Um, please keep us informed if there are any recommendations on um, on things that the board might need to consider doing, uh, if there's anything we can do to um, you know, to prevent something like this from happening in the future. Um, I know the Council on Aging is meeting tomorrow night and I'm sure this will be a a discussion among that that group as well. Okay, there's nothing further on that. Um, next up, we have discussion regarding a possible special town meeting in March for the town's right of refusal for four thirty-two Whitney Street. Tim, can you give us a a summary on what this is?
Yeah, so you you no doubt have this in the packet and I'm I'm trying to figure, I'm speaking to the community and I'm speaking to the board. So first right of refusal or something that's in what they call chapter land or sixty-one A uh, is when it's been used not for the zoned intention where the the owner gets a deferral under the sixty-one A. But because of that deferral, they they have to give notice to the town to be able to purchase that land under the requirements of sixty-one A. I'm not gonna keep showing you documents, but I got, I have a ton of ton of things here going on, so I need the board to think of this as kind of like two currents in the same river because there's one step will trigger another step. So the first discussion is relative to having a special town meeting. You need a special town meeting because you need an appropriation. And I'll go through this twenty-three acres on Whitney Street that is now in sixty-one A land that is being proposed to be sold to a private developer for an industrial use or a commercial use. Um, it doesn't, you know, the 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 terms on the last page of this document talking, talk about what it will be used for. Um, I think it's the last page. Yeah, it's statement of purpose, proposed use. And it talks about a forty to sixty thousand square foot building, commercial industrial wells, distribution processing potentially be served by new connection to a freight rail uh adjacent to the land. So I think when people read that, it's, you get a little nervous about the rail and having a spur into a parcel of land. Uh, I won't necessarily deal with that now, but in terms of having town meeting, you have a tw- a hundred and twenty-eight days from the date. It's either December fifth or December seventh, depending on if you go with the date of delivery or the date it's notarized. We'll work out those finite details, but quick facts. Uh, it's a, it's a bona fide offer uh by a third-party developer for one point seven million dollars for the twenty-three acres that are on Whitney Street. And the address is obviously uh four thirty-two Whitney Street. Uh, we're working with Catherine Klein at KP Law. And she confirmed today that this was a bona fide au- offer based on the documentation that we have. All of the committees that are supposed to opine on this have, except for um conservation, which they met tonight. Um, planning, open space. And then you have a detailed memo from the planning, from the planner relative to uh, the recommendation to exercise the right of first refusal. So when I talked about two currents in the same stream, if you do want to elect to exercise the right of first refusal, there's a notice, there's a hearing that the board has to hold in order to do that. We have to give notice in a newspaper. We have to notify uh the seller and the buyer. We don't have to notice a butters. Um, but you could actually hold that on the twenty-second as well if you've got to that particular point. We just need to publish it in a newspaper for at least eight days uh, before you have the public hearing to consider whether you want to exercise your first right. If you decide to exercise the right, you would need a town meeting. So the reason why this is on the agenda is because that hundred and twenty days is earlier or sooner than your scheduled annual town meeting, which is April twenty-second. So you'd miss that window, right? If you didn't have an appropriation, you couldn't do a PNS, you didn't have town meeting approval. So you need a special town meeting. Having said that, we did ask Catherine to reach out to the attorney uh, and the seller and the potential buyer to ask for an extension. The board knows the relationship with the landowner. We don't think we're gonna get that. We've asked for a forty-five day extension to give us plenty of window on both sides of town meeting. If you were to get it, we have a lot of options. If we don't get it, the board will have to have um call a special town meeting for, I think we're looking at March twenty-sixth is what the data think the town clerk gave us. So in order to do, if you do decide to exercise that option, I've already gone through this, I don't have to go through it again. But if you did publish on the eleventh, for example, depending on when the paper publishes its hard copy and or online copies, you could have the hearing on the twenty-second. Uh, I feel like I'm loading up that meeting for you, so I apologize for that. Um.
It's okay, it's, tonight's pretty light in comparison.
In terms of, you know, funding, I I did talk to the CPA uh Chair today, John. And I didn't want to have discussions outside of other people's meetings, but it would be a combination of funding to come up with the one point seven. We did do some outreach to other organizations that, you know, buy land from time to time. The trustee group would be one, and I think uh the planner did reach out to one other group. So there may be opportunities uh for to share this cost somehow, some way, but we have a combination of funding that I, you know, present to the board to get us close to the the one. that I, you know, present to the board to get us close to the the one point seven purchase price ahead of uh, an annual town meeting where we'd have more funding options. So if we have a special, we'll have limited funding options, which could include up to and including, but not limited to, I'll just say it that way. Uh, opera funding, uh, surplus overlay, uh, CPC money, cash and or slash borrowing. So those are the, those are the combinations of funding if we were to have to have a special town meeting. But again, you know, first we have to establish that we want to take this land and keep it for some other purpose, whether it's open space, recreation, uh, affordable housing or just to have and to hold. Uh, that'll determine how much CPA money we actually can get. So that's a question to be determined through the the hearing process and up to leading to town meeting. Uh, I'm trying to think if I missed pieces. I mean, I know you know a lot of background and history with this. I'll tell you that when I read this about the spur for the railroad and I I I've had a lot of experience with a railroad in Grafton. That railroads are preempt from a lot of state regulations and certainly a lot of local regulations like zoning and setback. They of course have to follow building code and things like that, but there's a lot of things they don't have to comply with. And if it were to be a rail use, there'd be very limited control for the community to control what happens on that parcel. So given that, I think that's some of the discussion in the planning memo that Laurie had written. Those are kind of the things that we have consternation over about what the future use might be. So I think everybody's recommending that the town exercise its right to purchase. And we just need to coalesce around that idea and we can figure out next steps together.
I'll add one, one thing for the benefit of um, of the public. Um, I know the board is is aware of this in this right of first refusal under sixty-one A. Um, if we as a town wanted to buy that land, we have to match the purchase price. So it is different than um, another situation where we might negotiate based on um, uh, the appraised value of the land or or something like that. This is entirely different. The state law dictates exactly what the price is, is that um, right down to the penny, we have to match the exact dollar price of the purchase and sale agreement. That's already been signed, which is one point seven million, which is why Tim has been mentioning that. Um, Tim, do you want me to share the map?
Um, of this area? Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have asked you to do that before. If we could, it would be helpful for people to context.
Okay, everyone should see this now. So this is from the town's assessor map system, um, and the area outlined in blue is the property that we're discussing here, four thirty-two Whitney. It is, there's a residential area here, uh, Coolidge Circle, which I know we're all familiar with. Is right below that. Um, and Tim pointed out, um, you know, the owner that we're familiar with. Um, four twenty-nine Whitney S A Farm is up in this area over here. Um, so it's across and diagonal from that. Uh, but this is separate from that. So this is an undeveloped parcel of land that has some wetlands here. Rail line is right along here. And uh, this is currently conservation area back here and some industrial area just to the north over here along Whitney Street, just out, just off of Whitney Street.
What's the, what's the green area?
This green area here, that's the wetlands.
Are there any trails in there that are already established or or near there, like in adjacent land?
I mean, the, there's the aqueduct trail goes along here. That's the only one I'm aware of. I don't think there's anything back here, but don't quote me on that.
I think this land, not that I can control the map, but to the I don't know, people looking at, so where you are now, that's DCR, I think. Uh, I don't know if you can click on it, should tell you the ownership, maybe not that parcel one down.
Yeah, that's DCR.
Okay.
Uh, that's also DCR.
Okay. So it might be a natural fit for them as well. So if it.
Yeah.
We we we're reaching out to them, but also. And they were notified, well, actually they weren't notified. Another group uh, to the state was notified forestry. But I'll make sure the right people know about it.
I think it's a, it, you know, it's an interesting opportunity, um, as far as what, you know, what we as a town could do with it. We could certainly add it to conservation land. We could do it, do a mix, you know, if we had, um, you know, say a million dollars from CPC with their open space fund. Um, and then other money that that didn't designate land as um, you know, deeded open space, we could then use and control the, and say the frontage along Whitney Street for affordable housing, regular housing, industrial or commercial use that we controlled, that we we felt would be compatible with the neighborhood. Um, there are a lot of opportunities um, there and and, you know, we we gain some flexibility depending upon the um, the source of funds that we would use to make the purchase. Uh, questions from the board? Julian?
So the timeline that's in the packet, it says on March twelfth. Uh, if if we, if we vote to have this special town meeting, on March twelfth, the town clerk mails special town meeting notice to each household for the meeting that's going to occur three days late. No, then there will be voter registrations. Uh, what is? Is that, so I guess, um, that would be fourteen, that's only two weeks before the meeting, right? That it's mailed, that's mailed and it gets there a couple of days later. Is it possible to mail that earlier?
The, I think the timing is prescriptive in terms of how soon you mail it, but I can, I can double check with Andy.
Okay, and what does voter registration mean for that?
If 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 people aren't currently registered to vote in the community, they'll, you have, you know, a call to register for those people who are eligible to vote and they they have residency here and they can register to vote.
Oh, okay.
voters now, you're kind of giving them notice that we'd have a meeting, you can come and register to vote.
Yeah, frequently before town elections and town meetings, town clerks will hold um, a a special voter registration drive for anyone that um, that isn't registered, that has interest in that topic or that meeting or that election.
Okay, good.
Uh, Lisa?
Uh, two questions. One, on the sixty-one A um, savings, tax savings, I guess it is. When that changes back to being not used for that reasoning, do we, there's a price difference on what the land had a value for versus what the land was being paid on. Like it's sixty-one A is a years of savings. Is the years of that being sixty-one A savings added up the difference and then that is paid back during the, during the time of um, sale is the first question.
All right, can I do the first one first? So that that's called a rollback tax. You're gonna, you, if the, if the town doesn't buy it and it's bought by a developer, you will get rollback taxes. The assessor hasn't done the estimate of what the rollback would be, so the duration of the time it was in sixty-one A. They would have to pay that to the town before they could close. If we buy it, it'd be no, it'd be no rollback taxes to be had because we would be the purchaser.
Even though, even though the taxes were were a benefit?
It's the purchaser that pays the taxes.
Exactly.
Oh, isn't that interesting? Okay, and then the the second question is the contract that the um, the bona fide um, potential buyer has made is gives him two years to to complete the deal. And he has various different caveats that if they don't get fulfilled, he doesn't have to complete the deal. Uh, we also want a two-year plan where if we're giving the same amount of money, shouldn't we have the same contract, so to speak, of a timeline? And then so, and if so doing, are we availing ourselves of that timeline in order to obviously budget the money better? We had two years to get the money together.
No, I mean, at the, at the end of the day, because you need town meeting, need the appropriation, you need that appropriation in order to make your own bona fide offer to match this. So you need town meetings approval for the full amount. You don't have time. I mean, how, how we fund it, if we had to borrow, you need town meeting for two-thirds majority vote to borrow. Um, you know, there would be caveats like that, but we would, we would want to close so we could have, you know, what we think the next um, evolution of that land should be. And just completely just, just execute it. But in terms of timing, closing, those are details to be worked out once we decide.
I think what Lisa is asking, I'll, I'll try to translate, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the purchase and sale agreement between the current owner and the potential future owner provides substantial flexibility in terms of closing date and other topics in there that they don't have to close very quickly on the property. And I think Lisa's question is instead of this hundred and twenty day period, couldn't we have the same option? And I, I think I know the answer, which is you can't, which is sixty-one A so says what the law is.
Yeah, I mean, the closing, you, we, we just have to give them notice that we're going to match the offer within a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty days. And then we, we'll get to closing as, you know, just general business operations happen. We get to closing, so.
But we don't, we don't have two years to think about it. We have a hundred and twenty days, even though their contract says the buyer has a hundred, has a couple of years to decide if they're really going to buy this or not. That has nothing to do with it.
It's two separate things.
Yeah.
One is we're operating under the confines of the law. It says we have a hundred and twenty days to make a decision. It has nothing to do with how long they have to close. It's just mutually exclusive. But I I should have done a better job explaining that. Thank you.
But can we then, even though we, even though we have the right, we put the PNS together, we we can close later. We don't have to close within thirty, sixty, ninety days, do we?
No, you'll, you'll come to a mutual agreement through the attorneys on when you could actually close. We got to do the title search, any um, you know, if we wanted to do any ser- soil evaluations, any kind of investigation inspections, do we want to do on the parcel? We'll probably have a window under the state law. I don't have that piece in front of me. It's probably another hundred and twenty days from the date we sign. Our intent to take it, to do those before we do the title search and do the closing.
Right.
But it's a good, I mean, I'll figure out what the next timing is once you vote to do it, if there's something prescriptive for that.
Because it could also be uh, leaned from some other source like the IRS could have a lean on the property as well. So we'd have to check to make sure that the title was clear.
Oh, without a doubt, yeah, the title search is part of the closing. Yep.
Yeah, part of purchase for any property. Any other questions from the board? So we're not making a formal decision tonight. Um, but we should decide by consensus, are we interested in moving forward with this? Um, which would be, um, you know, adding this to to our agenda to formally open and add this to a special town meeting warrant. Um, telling Tim to continue to do the work as if we were moving forward and um, or or are we interested, or if we are not interested in this, we can just tell them and put a stop to it. Thoughts from the board? Laura?
I just think in the interest of what that neighborhood has experienced so far, my preference would be to move forward with this offer and special town meeting, just to ensure the protections, I mean, the the thought of having a railway stop there would probably create a lot of commotion and traffic that they would not appreciate. So that would be my preference. Thank you.
Kristen?
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent. I I I agree with Laura and I think um, more open space and more, I mean, I, I did um, read the the note from the town planner and the, there's what was it? I don't know if I'm using the right word, but some endangered species or or species that are um, you know, whatever the other words are, um, about creatures that, okay, I won't, I won't look for it. But anyway, the animals in the area could probably use a break from whatever's already happening. So if what, if we could contribute more, you know, health and open space and clean water and clean air, I think that's a great thing in a area that's zoned for industrial and then also hopefully avoiding um, some of the potential pitfalls of the railway idea. But also, yeah, those neighbors have um, been dealing with a lot, so. But I think also this would be for everyone in the whole town. Um, to just have one more beautiful place. Like, that's why I asked about the trails, like, we have a really special town as far as we have so many gorgeous trails in all our little pockets of conservation land and maybe we could have another one there. And I also like the idea of possibly a location closer to the road for some housing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see one hand up from the audience before I recognize that person. Anyone on the board want to share anything at this time? Lisa and then Julian?
Um, a couple of things. If, um, first off, all the boards that had to consider it have come forward now, correct? I think they've all, they've all told us what they, what they feel.
Yeah, with the ex- conservation met tonight, it was on their agenda. I saw an email roll across the bottom of my screen. I'm assuming, well, I'm not assuming anything other than they voted on it. And then the assessors, while they're not a um, a board that offers an opinion, they're, they'll, they'll be neutral because they're assessors that, you know, what it's zoned for should be what it's zoned for, but that's not a matter of uh, it's not an impediment for you to make your decision not having that in writing. So, yes, the short answer was yes. Sorry.
So I mean, certainly we have been looking for a solution to a very long uh, drawn out problem, and I think this is a, this is a great solution. I um, and obviously we've got full support from pretty much anybody who's been talking about it. Um, I would certainly be behind it. Uh, one other question, just, just probably guess I should have asked this before, but when the DCR, if if the DCR were to purchase some of that or what, how would they do that? Would they purchase it from us after we want it or is one of the options to uh, to acquire it? So.
Probably, it'll be, it'll be a a public, public partnership. Cause they won't, I don't think they'll buy the whole thing, but they could buy directly if they have a a stated interest in a need for that from a Commonwealth perspective, they could purchase it. But I think it's more likely to be a, a shared partnership between the town and the state.
Okay, and in that case, we would still be able to use the land, right, for parks and things like that, maybe not to, maybe not to build on, but if it was the DCR to have trails or what have you, would that be avoided to the town?
I think that's all subject to negotiation. I would see not why not, but it's, it's open to negotiation. We don't even know if they're interested yet, so I'll, we'll get to that and then I can, we can, we can get to trails.
Y'all set, Lisa? Okay, Julian?
Well, I I, I mean, I agree with every, every reason that my fellow select board members have articulated about the reason to buy this property, but I just want to point out to anybody listening that um, in the packet, Lori Connors identifies that some even more positive things about this property, one of which is the connection between the aqueduct to the west of the rail.
Is Julian breaking up for other people as well?
I can't hear her.
Okay, oh, Julian is frozen. I'll give it a second and see if that clears up. If not, we'll uh, we'll move on to the audience and come back to her. Okay, Julian, I don't know if you hear us, but uh, but you. Okay, Julianne, I don't know if you hear us, but uh, but you've frozen and we no longer hear you. So uh, I'm gonna move it uh over to the audience and we'll come back. Uh, Amy Peretzky, you've had your hand up for a little while. Uh, Amy, I'll. Bring you in if you could unmute and identify yourself. Let us know what's on your mind, please.
Hi, Amy Peretzky, forty seven Indian Meadow Drive. And um, like Tim said, I just actually watched the Concom meeting and they did vote unanimously to support. The project. And one thing they did mention, which Julianne might have been getting to, is the Northborough D C R land actually connects. To Berlin D C R land and Hudson D C R land. So at Concom, they were saying it might make a really nice. East west, west path in connection between those towns in the future. So that was um. One of the ideas that they brought up, but.
Great. Good to know, thank, and thank you for, a lot of news on that, appreciate it. Okay, thanks, Amy.
Thanks.
Okay, hopefully Julianne will be able to uh reconnect before too long. I, I, I'll. Share my thoughts, which are very, very similar to other board members' opinions, which is that, yes, we should pursue. Uh, the purchase of this land, um, you know, for a number of reasons. You know, one of which is. That we've heard some rumors as far as what the um industrial development. Idea is for that in terms of connecting with the railroad. Um, we don't know that factually, so I, I don't wanna speak to any detail on just rumors. But I'm confident that that. That type of development would be very incompatible. With the residents in the area. Um, and I, I, this is an opportunity to, to redirect the use of that land to something better. And I, you know, I, I am cognizant that one point seven million dollars doesn't grow on trees. And we will need to couple together different funds to make this happen. Uh, but um, but we should, we should try to do that, and I, I like, just speaking for myself, I like the idea. Of preserving the frontage along Whitney Street for some future use of some sort. Um, but because we, the town, would own that land. We can make sure that the development of that, if it takes place, um, would be compatible with the residents in the area. Kristen.
While we're waiting for Julianne. Because I assume she's gonna try to get back. I can read the part that I was uh like mumbling and tripping over my own words. It abuts. A large swath of conservation land located within the town of Berlin that is classified as N H E S P. Priority habitat of rare species. That's the first thing on Laurie Connor's uh list, but. There are a lot of other really good reasons she mentions, and I don't know if, it sounded like Julianne was maybe also going to mention that. Um, one of her bullet points is the parcel boasts beautiful views towards Boston from a high point located along the western. Portion of the property. So. I didn't know that. That could be really beautiful. I don't have my. Phone near me, so I don't know if Julianne's been texting and trying to let us know what's going on, but.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything.
Possible they lost power?
Uh, I wonder.
I will, um, also, sorry.
Yeah, please, Laura, go ahead.
And another comment, and I think Kristen touched on this as well, but I've spoken to John Campbell, who chairs the C P C committee. And they had written a letter in support of this, and they also wondered if there may be a way to look at this as a location for affordable housing. So they were very much on board with this as an option. For the town. So it's nice to have that kind of feedback and response from so many of the other committees that this has been in front of. And each of them have come back with different. Factors to really. Support this decision from a variety of different angles.
Yeah. Various good reasons.
Okay, um, I don't think there's any, there's no decision that we need to make. It's clear that the board has consensus that we would like to continue. Along this, uh, this path and have a meeting. You know, at, at, at our next, oh, good, Julianne is rejoining. Um, I'll wait to make sure she. See if she has anything else. Welcome back, Julianne. Good, unmute yourself and just make sure we can, you can be heard.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you well. Thank you, thank you very much for coming back. Um, you were in the middle of, of speaking. We did continue the discussion a little bit and heard from a resident. Um, all in favor of um, you know, of acquiring this land, so our next step. Would be uh at our regular meeting on the twenty second of this month to um, to consider opening a town meeting warrant. Um, article for the twenty sixth of March. And if there's anything else you wanna, you wanna add before we close out this item, but uh.
Well, I thi- I was just gonna finish by saying that there's some really special parts of this property that. Are above and beyond the other good reasons that people have stated to purchase it, so. I'm all in favor.
Agreed, okay, excellent. All right, um. So I think uh, Tim, you have your okay to uh, to go ahead. Do you have anything else you, you wanted to add at this time?
Just a point of clarity, but if we give notice, this is just. For the notice for the taking, not for town meeting.
Okay.
That public hearing will happen on the twenty second if we can get it in. By the eleventh, and it may be the eight day rule as we were advised today. On the twenty second too, you can call for a special town meeting. Cause you can call for a special town meeting at any time.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, it, yeah, and Andy's schedule, you're right, that's not until the end of February. But we should at least informally do that as early as possible to start that process.
Yeah, I mean, again, if we get. Cooperation from the buyer and the seller to extend it, maybe we can hold off. I don't, I mean. I just wanna put those pieces out there, cause if it changes again, I just want you to know. And we're working to, to make it as painless as possible. To take the next step, but I don't wanna be confused next week. I'll have a public hearing, or two weeks, I'll have a public hearing. To uh, to exercise your right for refusal.
Um, it would be great. Obviously, if we did get an, an extension, um, there is a cost. Associated with holding a special town meeting. I, I think we guessed it was around seven thousand dollars. Um, that's not nothing, but that's what we would have to do if we wanted to do this and there was no extension. Any, anything else on this item before we continue on? Okay, um, we've already done the state emergency shelter update, so next up we have reports. Uh, let's see, Laura, any reports tonight?
I have a lot. I'm, I'm gonna read quickly. Um, in the last couple of weeks, I've had some really fun experiences. I got to attend Chief Brian Griffin's swearing in at Northborough Library. I wanna express my gratitude to everyone for the fact action to. Move the location to the library. It was originally supposed to be at the Senior Center, but because of that impact, they moved it. Um, there was food, there was amazing company, Northborough Cable was there. If you have a minute to watch it, the video is available online. The whole ceremony was beautiful, but one of the highlights that I really enjoyed was when Chief Griffin recognized. Uh, three offi- uh, two, an off- Officer Ryan Clark, Sergeant Justin Foucher and Dispatchor Kate Mick. They received the distinguished service award for their heroic work on November fourth. So to get the full details of that, you're welcome to go and watch the video on Northborough Cable. I apologize again to the folks that do rely on the Senior Center for camaraderie and for their food. For, for the closure for those couple of weeks, I definitely recognize the impact of that. Um, I wanted to let folks know that the elderly and disabled trustees fund is in need of volunteers. There aren't currently any applications, but if you have the time or bandwidth to volunteer, please go to the town website. And complete an application. The local emergency planning committee is in the process of doing the town hazardous mitigation planning. Your feedback is, is important. So if you have a minute to go, complete the community lifeline survey. It's available on the Northborough Town website, and you can visit that by clicking on the link. The local emergency planning committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for March twentieth at ten A M. Uh, the Northborough Traffic Safety Committee has had three meetings so far, with their next meeting tomorrow evening. They meet the second Tuesday of every month, and so far, the committee, with the support of former police chief Livers, Scott, uh, D P W director Scott Sharpen here. And Megan Condon have had thoughtful discussions on many citizen inquiries that have been directed to the town. Prior to the creation of the committee. And they really do an amazing job deliberating and really spending a lot of time thinking about the variety of impacts of. You know, heavy vehicle restrictions, speed bumps, gargrels, bridge and sidewalk conditions. There's a whole. Whole, you know, a variety of, of things that they discuss, and it's a neat committee in terms of their backgrounds that they bring to the table. Um, one thing that I did wanna let the board know about that is that the board, the Traffic Safety Committee has been discussing. The possibility, or I guess supportive adding two new police officers to assist with traffic enforcement. During the peak hours. There will be a memo coming our way just to share some additional information on that. Um, and, and this is again, the committee that the residents can use to direct the traffic safety related inquiries to. So again, stop by tomorrow for their meeting if you're able to. Another board that I'm liaison, and I will comment, actually, there's another, um, due to scheduling conflicts for me, I'm actually going to be switching my liaison position. From the Traffic Safety Committee. With the Parks and Recreation, and Lisa will be, will be, will be part of the Traffic Safety Liaison Program. Sorry, I jumped past that. And thank you, Lisa, for your flexibility to help me with that. Um, the C P C is in great discussions right now with a variety of applications that we'll be hearing coming up. One is for a, for affordable housing corp. To add a hundred and twenty six thousand to their reserve for affordable housing development. There's also a request from the Open Space Committee to add three hundred and fifty thousand to their Conservation Fund for land acquisition. And then the committee also discussed the four thirty two Whitney Street, which we all saw, that memo that came in our packet. And um, and a variety of ways that they're looking to help fund that if we go forward. The next C P A uh meeting will continue the public hearing, and that will be on Thursday, February first. If you're able to join that, feel free to stop by. Um, as far as the assessors go, the one thing that uh, the principal assessor wanted me to let folks know about is that. There's still time to apply for property tax relief programs, which are also known as personal exemptions. There's a variety of exemptions for people with, you know, qualifying seniors, people, blind, blind pe- persons. Uh, qualifying disabled veterans, qualifying surviving spouses. Minor children and elderly persons, so if you qualify for any of those. Or even if you've got a question, the assessors are a great place to direct those questions to. That's all for my report.
Thank you very much, Laura. Kristen, any reports tonight?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't muted, so I didn't get a, like a. An X next to my name. Here we go. Um, so, like, we were all at new Chief Griffin. Swearing in and it was, it was really wonderful, so. I, I mean, I don't think we all need to like rave about it, but I did have, and I was gonna mention those three. Those three people got the award from him and the, or the commendation. For their bravery that night uh in November. Um, Ryan and Justin and Katie. But. I also just kind of in general wanted to say just thanks to the unsung heroes. Which sort of makes them not unsung anymore, cause they're getting. Um, a little shout out, but I'm not mentioning names, so they're still unsung mostly. Um, people who in our community in general, who stay up all night. Working and dealing with scary and difficult things while the rest of us are sound asleep. That's so important, and I guess. Last night it would have been the D P W. I was on the Northborough Moms Facebook page, cause I was in Boston yesterday. I had a, a. A relative from out of town coming in. To the city, so I went in and um spent some time with her, and I was gonna be driving back. And I read the Northborough Moms Facebook page and saw like, the roads are still bad, like they're, you know, they're doing their best out there, but. It's still just really slippery, and by the time I did come home, everything was perfect and it was. It was really nice, so. Shout out to those guys um today. And thank you also, I'm gonna mention, I believe her first name is Frankie Sullivan, the woman who. That, who's married to. One of the police officers in the Northborough Police Department. She sang the National Anthem. Her husband came up and talked to me and Lisa for a little while afterwards, and. She has such an amazing voice and it really, really. Made the um, just the moment really beautiful, and thanks to Troop One O One for showing up and doing the flag. Presenting of the colors. That was fun, cause I guess Chief Griffin used to be in Troop One O One. Also, welcome to the new members of the um. Northborough Fire Department. We have um recently hired a couple of new. Guys, Joe La. Renier, or La Fragne. And Dante Brindisi. Um, they're gonna be part of our great new team. Or a, a new part of our great team there at the fire department. Congratulations to our very own right here, Diane Whackel. And um, for taking. Thank you for taking the job and congratulations on getting the job as our new assistant town administrator. Because she's really great at what she does. Um, so thanks, Diane, and um, welcome back to Jason Little. Yay. And I have a very quick um quote. Wisdom comes with winters. That's by Oscar Wilde, so. I think by like April or March, we all should be pretty smart. That'll be great.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh, Lisa, any reports tonight?
I do have reports tonight. I actually have quite a few reports tonight, but I feel like I'm carrying Laura's, in Laura's place here. Um, and the first being. Uh, a thank you to the D P W for hanging wreaths to the town hall, police station and D P W building as well. As lighting trees on Lake Street. I understand that Dan Brillhart takes on the hanging of the fire station wreaths. Every year and enjoys getting involved in that, and we thank him for helping with our holiday celebration. Um, I'm also looking forward to my fire station ride. Finally, right along this week, something else major doesn't happen. Um, Carolyn Harrington and Diane Desposito worked with Julianne Hirsch and Amy Peretzky. To decorate the planters on Church Street for the holidays. Um, and an appreciative shout out to Carolyn, Diane, Julianne, Amy and Laura Zaitin. For their efforts to bring in a collective team of holiday decorators to enhance our town common. And downtown with wreaths, garland, boxwood and velvet bows. The wreaths were generously donated by the Town Common Committee. And hung on the Old Town Hall, which hasn't seen holiday adornments in years. Amy and Julianne got the ball rolling with the garland, boxwood and red velvet ribbon along the town common granite fence and a special grand red bow. Hung on the center tree. The impressive oversized red bow was magnanimously donated by Mitch Cook of Lexus of Northborough. And with all of this going on and his bow, it was making this our December to remember. Okay, next, a few weeks ago, um, thirty seven Pier Street, the location of the food pantry changed ownership. From Try to Do Good LLC to the Fidrich Foundation. We would like to say thank, thank you to Tim Schafer, his years of generosity, to the Food Pantry Hosting. And the Fidrich Foundation for now carrying the torch. The town of Northborough Food Pantry is a much needed resource, and they are asking for additional volunteers right now to help. You can call five zero eight, three nine three, six eight nine seven for more information from the food pantry. Um, last Tuesday, I was one of many, and I do mean many, as we've already said. Who attended the swearing in of Brian Griffin as our new Northborough Police Chief. Uh, Brian worked his way up through the department for many years to achieve his lifelong dream, and I was honored to be able to help facilitate that. Um, he didn't even wanna stay in the limelight. He used his time to talk about. His three officers and, and that speaks volumes for the kind of man of the years. Um, working as a team and recognizing hard work and dedication to promote from within. Will go a long way to build a healthy relationship between the citizens, town staff and our town leaders. Congratulations, Brian. And the same goes to Diane Whackel. Congratulations. Last Wednesday at my housing authority meeting, a discussion about the removing of trees in their property ensued. The select board received correspondence from a few very concerned residents regarding the removal of trees at the Colonial Village. Um, it's always a shock to see mature trees removed. Um, an advance notice would help to bring attention to the intent to cut, instead of seeing the end result first. Trees are an important part of our ecosystem, and we need to do better in replacing those removed. This is another subject for the select board to address, hopefully, and soon. Um, I look forward to being the new liaison to the Traffic Safety Committee. Um, I look forward to being the new liaison to the Traffic Safety Committee. This is our newest committee and the Select Board created to aid residents in their safety concerns by giving them a vehicle to express those concerns for resolutions in an effort to give them a better quality of their right to quiet enjoyment. We look forward to residents joining the meetings with their concerns, requests, or appreciation and having greater involvement with the outcome. The fire station building meaning, min- meetings, Mitch may be talking about this as well, um, are going on and there's a few dates to remember. They are January tenth at six thirty PM at the Town Hall and January seventeenth, seven PM at the library. And that is for public comments. Um, this is the last time for residents to, uh, express their thoughts about the building before coming to, uh, the design review and going into the rest of the process. So we really would like to see more people there as the last two meetings we've had have been very minimally attended. Um, On another note, I noticed that the Facebook community has been discussing electronic voting for town meeting and I am in support of this. I would like to have an agenda item at the January twenty-second Select Board meeting to discuss this and vote on next steps. A topic of agenda items request should also be added to our standard meeting items to give the board the opportunity pick up topics of interest. And I hope I have the support from the board for this and again, further discussion. And finally, I am again asking for volunteers of our citizenry to become a board or committee member. We have openings at Design Review, ZBA, Finance Committee, and more. And feel free to contact me for more information. And that's it for my reports. Thank you.
Lisa, thank you. Um, it just quickly, uh, Tim and I have had a number of conversations about scheduling the town meeting clicker, um, agenda item. Um, I'm not sure if that'll be on the twenty-second or one after that, but I know Andy's collecting all the data that we need. For that in the near future and we'll, we'll make that decision. And, and my understanding is we don't have to adopt something at town meeting and do it next year in theory. Um, if, uh, if something is funded, um, we might be able to use it for this town meeting. Um, but we'll keep the board informed as, as, you know, as soon as that can get scheduled, that will be. Um, Julianne, any reports tonight?
Just a couple of things. So Lisa brought up the, the trees that, that were cut down by the library and you know, we've had some, some other projects in town that involved tree cutting or even proposed tree, tree cutting, um, that Jean Cahill brought up at the last meeting. So, um, I'm, I went back to our municipal code and the policy is that the Board of Selectmen have, and I'll just read the policy. The Board of Selectmen to encourage the conservation of public shade trees in the Town of Northborough to work for a planned program of replacement for public shade trees that have been removed because of disease or public nuisance, construction or danger. And further, it shall be the policy of the board to encourage residents, businesses, and private builders to conserve and to plant shade trees. Under procedures, um, it says, "The Board of Selectmen shall annually, by September thirtieth, prepare a recommendation in a specific site location plan for public shade tree replacements and additions and a proposed planting budget for said replacements and additions. And further, shall prepare the proposed planting budget to directly reflect replacement costs." So, I'm, I, I am reporting on this tonight because I, I think we need to clarify our responsibility with the various tree projects in town. Part of the MPIC is gonna be to, you know, to, to look at the streetscape. So where I think we need to, as a group, decide, do we want to re-implement this September thirtieth deadline and um, and start being more involved with the projects. So maybe that can be on a future agenda. And speaking of future agendas, it is the beginning of the year and um, I think it would be very helpful to, at our next meeting, if, if possible, um, just to look at a calendar and start indicating when we are going to discuss the various big topics that are hanging over us. We talked about goals. We taught, we have to talk about white lives. We have to talk about ARPA. ARPA comes up a lot. So if we could look at a calendar so that the public, and we even know when, when these topics will, you know, we're hoping that they will be discussed. I understand agendas have to be flexible, but, um, I, I, for me personally, and maybe for the public, we, uh, it would be nice to know when these things will be discussed. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Julianne. Uh, Laura?
I made a mistake and I just want to clarify it when I was mentioning CPC and open space. So I apologize. I just wanted to say that the Open Space Committee is the group that voted in favor of buying four thirty-two Whitney. Um, and that was the one that was sent a letter of support. And then the chair of the CPC had represented open space, so they supported the idea on behalf of the Open Space Committee. So just to clarify that, and, and if you've got questions for the minutes, please let me know. But I apologize for misstating that.
Thanks for the clarification, Laura. Um, let's see, um, I, I had many of the same things on my reports list, so I'll, I'll just quickly mention a couple of them uh, that were already mentioned. I will say, of course, the DPW did an excellent job, uh, cleaning up after our first snowstorm of the season. Thank you very much. Scott and everyone else. Um, I know somebody already mentioned the January seventeenth, which is next Wednesday, uh, Public Input Meeting for the Fire Station Building Committee. Um, really encourage people to attend in person. Uh, that's very, very helpful. Um, I think it's more valuable than simply watching the meeting later on video. It will be, of course, recorded. Um, and I would also suggest members of the public take a look at the updated Fire Station Building Committee webpage on the town website. Thank you, Tim, for, uh, for getting some issues sorted out with that, uh, within the last few days. Um, we all mentioned how much fun it was to attend Chief Griffin's swearing in. Um, uh, I want to say Happy New Year to everybody. Uh, and, um, I did want to say that a week from Thursday on the eighteenth, uh, this board will be meeting jointly with the Master Plan Implementation Committee, um, to hear the downtown redevelopment, uh, plans. Uh, members of the board will, uh, will receive copies of, uh, of the draft plan. I think sometime this week is what I've been told. And, um, I spent some time on the phone today with Rick Leaf, the Chair of Master Plan, um, uh, preparing, uh, for that meeting. Um, it'll be a remote meeting. Uh, there will be a lot of opportunity for board member and public, uh, input and questions. Um, and I'm really looking forward to that as I know we all have been. Uh, and that concludes my reports. Uh, Laura, oh, a whole bunch of hands up. Did I make, make a mistake? Uh, Laura, I saw your hand first.
I did check the website quickly. So is the Fire Station Meeting is the seventeenth?
There's a Fire Station Building, Regular Building Committee Meeting, um, this, this coming Wednesday. That's just a regular business meeting. It's open to the public, of course. But the, uh, the meeting on the seventeenth is a public input meeting that is explicitly there, not for regular business, but, um, uh, for presentation of the latest versions of the designs and findings and input from the public on, um, uh, which way, which direction the public and members of the public have interest in going.
And that's on January, I'm just trying to check the town website.
I don't, I don't know if it would be posted yet because the agenda hasn't been put, put together. Um, but, uh, it's, yeah, the, the, the tenth is a regular, that's this Wednesday is just a regular Building Committee Meeting. Seventeenth is the, is the one that people should definitely plan to attend.
Perfect. Thank you for clarification.
Okay. Did anybody, did that answer the questions of all the other hands that went up?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Lisa?
Um, could you also, uh, on the website, put up the photographs or that are the three or four ideas that they are going, that they're looking at? Because I've had a few people ask me about that. They went online, they couldn't find it and felt that it would be good to have it in advance to be able to look at it and prepare questions. And, um, and I think that, that that would be great. I don't know how you manage to do that, but.
Yeah, Tim, could you, um, speak with, uh, the Fire Chief or, uh, remember the architect team to see about that? Excellent. Thanks, Tim. Um, you're muted, but I can read your lips well enough. That's good. Um, all right. So that concludes reports, um, from the board. Uh, Tim, do you have any reports tonight?
Uh, I just want to cover a couple of quick things and you've, you've really covered it, but your roads compared to other communities were great. So thanks to DPW. Uh, I'm gonna just rip through some things that I think are important. Nomination papers for the annual town election, which is on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, will be available beginning January sixteenth. The deadline to obtain, uh, the papers is March eighth. I don't know when they need to be returned by. I guess I should have figured that out first, but if you're interested in, um, being on the ballot, you need to get your uh, paperwork and the positions that are open. Uh, offices open this year, moderator, Select Board two seats, Planning Board two seats, School Committee two seats, Regional School Committee two seats, and Assabett Valley School Committee is one seat. Uh, I won't cover the fact that Diane is no longer Encham. She is the Assistant Town Administrator. We need to backfill her position, so we're working on that next. Jason, we've covered him at length, so we won't have to talk about him. Um, the MMA Conference, I, I believe Diane, you're going with Lisa and I know that the chair is going. I will not be able to go because I had a previous commitment that I made in September for that weekend, which is horrible, but. Um, so the MMA Conference, there's, there's classes that, uh, Diane and Lisa are gonna go to and they can collaborate tag team on those particular pieces to get good information and we can have best practices in those areas going forward. Uh, I had some discussion with the new police chief, uh, about Asher training. It used to be Alice, now it's Asher. But I don't think we've done anything to protect our town employees ever. So in the spring, we will do an active training in the building and we'll get the broader price of that. Uh, the other thing you'll see in most public spaces are fire extinguishers and we never train on fire extinguishers. So we gotta coordinate that with the, the fire department to, uh, to have people learn how to handle a fire extinguisher. God forbid we ever need to use one, but that'll be in April or May too. Uh, I continue to get, set meetings with, uh, union presidents. Um, just to have an introductory meeting and calling chairs of particular committees and setting up meetings with the chairs. And I'm also visiting boards and committees that I have in meetings, not to be on their agenda, but just to put my face with the name and say hello and let them know that I'm here as a resource. Um, and also, and I might have excellent staff to either as a liaison to them or support them directly. Uh, I will, if the board didn't notice already, we will have department, departmental wide meetings uh, on a monthly basis, but certainly as needed, if needed, we will always meet. I will talk to them tomorrow about developing subgroups. So if you want to know the operation of municipal government, you know, you want obviously a finance team, an operations team, uh, a public safety team, arts and leisure, how the budget breaks out the different categories. I'd kind of have a committee around those particular functions. And they can meet on a weekly basis or as needed, just to, um, share ideas, best practices, and where they might get hung up. So I want to be able to have those develop, develop those subgroups to have those resources for my, my team in place. With regards to the finance, uh, and the budget, uh, we are, we do have a lot of the budgets in. I told you I'm still waiting on one. But obviously from a revenue standpoint, we're waiting on the governor's budget to see what the preliminary numbers are for state aid. Uh, I've talked to the school superintendent. They have a preliminary budget in place and I don't think they vote until February on what they're actually gonna submit. Health insurance is an outstanding number, um, outstanding in terms of finding out what it is. So they're doing our comparative analysis for our loss run statements to figure out what the increase is likely to be. So we know there'll be an increase in health insurance. So I'm hoping to get that next week so we can plug that into the budget. And then Wister County Retirement is another big number, which I think they release this third week in January. Somebody's going to, uh, to an event to get that. So that's kind of an outstanding big item that we're gonna collect as we go. Uh, there's a lot of items in process. I'll just read these real quick. The CMRPC is still conducting interviews for the feasibility of having emerged uh, Youth and Family Services or Family Youth Services and, and the Department of Public Health. So we're still studying that and that's ongoing. The Town Office Feasibility Study with Icon is the architect we chose. They're interviewing the, uh, department heads and staff this week and will go on next week to talk about space needs for everyone. One item that's kind of ongoing that we're working on with two attorneys is the purchase and sale for thirteen Church Street. So lawyers are discussing that particular matter. I know it was important to the board when I first got here to stay on that. And I just wanted to give you a public, uh, recognition that that's underway. And that will, uh, conclude my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Diane, any reports tonight?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, next up on our agenda, we have execution of Cemetery Deed one-one-eight-two. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Moves at the board to execute. I can't even read without glasses all of a sudden. I can't believe it. Cemetery deed one-one-eight-two.
Second.
A motion made by Lisa, seconded by Kristen. Any discussion? All those in favor? Lisa?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Laura? Hope you're muted, Laura. I have to actually hear you.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Cemetery deed is approved. Excuse me, is there any other business, um, before the board that, uh, wasn't on our agenda we need to deal with? Julianne?
Um, can I just ask Tim a question about one of the items you've reported on? So, uh, CMRPC is conducting interviews and trying to figure out the feasibility of combining family and youth services with under the Health Department, correct?
Correct.
And you mentioned interviews. Who are the interviews with? Do you know?
Yeah, yeah, we put together a, a stakeholder list. Um, there are a lot of people there from, you know, the agencies who might provide services. And then there's internal groups and external groups. And the list is pretty exhaustive. Um, I can get it for you. I don't have it immediately available.
Oh, that, you know what? I'm, I'm meeting with you on Wednesday, so we can talk about it then.
Okay, all right, great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Lisa?
I forgot to mention in my reports that I did look at the Fire Chief's report. Is it, and did want to mention it, um, because we're so far into the end of the meeting, I don't want to get I don't want to do it now, but I will bring it up at our next meeting. But I want to appreciate, you know, recognize he put a lot of work into giving his report to us. I do like to have our monthly reports from all of the departments that we can have. And, um, and I look forward to, um, to talking about that at the next meeting.
Great. Thanks, Kristen. We, we usually have nothing under other business. Laura, the pressure's on you to come up with something.
I just want to join in the party, but actually I'm sort of echoing Lisa. So that's, that's where I got the, the, I think I actually met Dante the day I was there. Like he'd been there for a while, but it was in the report that he was new and also Joe. So, um, but he, uh, but the, the chief, um, did put a lot of work in and he's funny. He wrote a little note about how you know, I like my charts and graphs. And it has all the data from the month because he does a report every month, but he also does a report. This one is for the entire year. And when I met with him, he said, you know, I don't like to like a lot of chiefs put the, um, the yearly report in December, but he said, I can't do that because then I don't have the, all the December data. I have to have all my data. And I said, well, you know, you could, you could fudge it, you could estimate, you could whatever. And he's like, no, 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 no. So he really does put a lot of work into those reports. So admire the pie charts. They're, they're lovely if you haven't had time yet.
Well, frameable.
Yes.
Laura, do you happen to have any new business? It's okay if you don't.
No new business, thank you. Or other business?
Um, yeah, I, I will mention it, echoing, um, a couple of things that were mentioned that uh, back, I think in July or so, we started to get uh, memos from the then Assistant Town Administrator on new hires. Um, that said, you know, so-and-so has been hired for this position with a little bit of a background. I would love to see that come back again. So the board, um, is aware of the hiring and, uh, and knows something about the great people that we're bringing on staff or, um, promotions or transfers or anything else within the organization. Be great if we could, uh, start to see that. Great, thank you. Um, uh, is there any public comment before we close out the meeting? If there is any public comment, if, uh, someone If there is any public comment, if uh, someone would raise their virtual hand, I'll be more than happy to recognize you. I don't see anything going once, going twice. Public comment is closed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen to adjourn. All those in favor. Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We are adjourned at nine twelve PM. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.